Calm, relax, Mr. Lutner.
Yeah.
He's retired.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Burlington City Council Meeting Number 16 for the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers on August 20th already, 2012. Would you please stand and join with Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, can we have a roll call, please?
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCamell?
Reed?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from consent and will be considered separately. On the Consent Agenda this evening, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, city claims, beer, liquor, wine, cigarette licenses, reports, and bonds. We have four resolutions. First is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for his properties. Second is a resolution approving agreement with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for evaluation of transit service delivery options. Third is a resolution for authorizing the filing of applications for the 2012-2013 certified local government grant rounds of hosting the 2013 Preserve Iowa Summit. And number four is a resolution establishing a school zone for reduced speed limit around Edwards Stone Middle School, which we are requesting to be removed from the Consent Agenda, so we're going to have discussion about that on the regular agenda. Please don't let me forget to do that. And we're setting a date of September 4th for consideration of sale of property locally known as 547 South Central Avenue, City of Burlington, Boone County, Iowa. We have two appointments. Mayor Protan Reed.
Yes, Your Honor, we have for low-rent housing on board Kelly Johnson and Riverfront Advisory Committee David Weimar. Thank you.
Thank you for serving. Is Kelly here? No Kelly. David's here. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
That's it?
That's it.
I've got to say something.
Step to the microphone and say something.
Keep it short.
Short? I will short. I want to say regarding the appointment to the Riverfront Committee, I take it very seriously, and I accept the challenge that comes with it. I wanted you to know that I'm a retired landscape architect with over 50 years of professional and volunteer experience. I moved back home to Burlington seven years ago. Regarding the Riverfront, I see our undeveloped Riverfront as an opportunity, and I hope my vision and action will help the committee to move that forward. Using the Riverfront as I believe it should be used is that it should be enjoyed by every citizen, for its scenic beauty, pathways, green space with benches and trees, shrubs, and perhaps a playground for children, and even a shelter house, and of course more boating opportunities. I will do my best to promote the recreational facilities of the Riverfront.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the appointment.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
And go on to the elementary school.
Okay. Oh, enjoy Dr. Stone, yes. Sir, anyone from the audience wishing to remove any other items from the Consent Agenda? Council, do you have any that you'd like to have removed? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that a motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second.
Excluding Item Four.
Yes, excluding Item Four.
All right.
Still second.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson? Aye.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Now we go to resolutions, and we have an important one right off the bat.
Resolution approving the appointment of Chief of Police.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Mr. Frenel, could you elaborate on this for us, please?
Sure. We got to go through the process of having 17 applicants for the position, three internal, went through an interview process, two of them a little bit more in-depth than the third, as well as two very in-depth external candidates as well. The selection process out of those four was pretty difficult because every one of them had very strong points. But going through that process, the recommendation is to see Major Behr move up to become our new Chief of Police.
Very well said.
Very good.
Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Mary, you're not going to say anything? No? Okay. Major Behr, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I could.
Yes.
Trying to keep this short, Bob. Now, first and foremost, I'd just like to thank the City Manager and the Council for your support and confidence in me. Then I'll do everything in my power to move the department in the direction that you choose. Secondly, and extremely important to me, I'd like to thank my family, my wife and my two children. I mean, without their unwavering support over the years, I couldn't be standing up here today. They've fulfilled their role as being a police family, if you will. We kind of live in a glass house, and they've taken that role very seriously. And without that help and that support, I couldn't be here. So, I want to thank my extended family, the Burlington Police Department, because really when you think about this and break this down, this isn't about me, but it truly is about them. I mean, they come to work every day, they pull on their boots, button up their shirts, and they come committed, committed to do a job for the community. And without their overwhelming support, I'm confident I wouldn't be the one standing here in front of you today. And last but certainly not least is the community itself. I mean, they keep asking me, whoa, can you describe your feeling? Well, I'm just humbled, and I'm overwhelmed at the support I've gotten from the community, text messages, phone calls, emails. It's just very humbling, to say the least. So, with that said, I promise you that I'll come to work every day and put my best foot forward. So, thanks for your confidence.
Thank you. Well said, sir. Chief Lutner, are you going to say anything? Nope? Okay. All right, seeing no other comments, are you ready for a vote, Council? Any comments?
Yes.
You want to make any comments?
Nope.
I'm eager to see how you do, sir. It'll be great.
Jim Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
It is approved. Congratulations, Chief Behr. Thank you for coming, both of the police officers.
I can swear a little right now.
Go for it.
I state your full name.
I allow that, Chief Behr.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The Office of Chief of Police.
The Office of Chief of Police.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
With witness.
Stick your hand.
Okay. Thanks for coming, folks. We'll wait just a minute while they...
They don't want to stay for us? Clap.
You can't go.
Health controls that.
Okay. Ready to move on. Now, two weeks ago, we had a resolution approving Amendment Number Two of the Collective Bargain Agreement between the City of Burlington and Local Association 7176, the Communication Workers of America, AFL-CIO, which we tabled to today. So, Mrs. Hunter, do you have any other comments? Or any comments? Tell us what happened in the meantime, will you please?
So, we're talking about the CWA Amendment by itself, or...
You talk about both of them, if you like.
Okay, okay. Actually, all three now.
Yeah.
Yes, the City Manager and I are ready to present these amendments to you. We appreciate your patience. We had an opportunity to meet with the CWA International Representative last Wednesday morning, and that went well, and she was in agreement with our amendment as we had presented it. As you know, the city was contractually obligated to a 4% increase for all three unions next July 1st, and that's a total of 182 employees. And the union leadership for all the unions went to their members and asked them to voluntarily give up that 4% increase for a 2%. And fortunately, all three bargaining units agreed to that change, with the agreement that we would extend their contracts for two years, 2% on the following July 1st, and 2% on the final July 1st. Status quo on all other language, except we needed to correct the fact that we do use the dental allocation. We factor that into that 5% increase. While I'm mentioning the 5% increase, we mentioned this during the work session, but it is cumulative. We are, actually, the unions are 1.8% to the good on that, and so there were two years that they agreed to plan design changes that actually dropped the increase to 3.5% one year and 4.7% in another year. So, they are 1.8% to the good, and the premiums could possibly increase to 6.8% before they be required to reopen another contract. So, I just want everyone to have that understanding.
Good. Thank you.
So, with that, I will take any questions you have.
Well, I don't really have a question, but I just have a, I guess, a sense of pride, I want to say, in that we have this type of, you know, coming from the people who work for the city, that they would do that, step up and do that, and I just wished I could shake all their hands, because I know that they've given up something, and they know that, you know, we're kind of in a bind, and they gave up something, and I'm just really proud to be a council over those people and be part of that.
Thank you very, very much.
Well said.
And Jim and I feel the same. We are very proud that we have these bargaining units that we can talk to and work with, and they'll step forward and make these concessions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please convey to your members our great appreciation. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Twenty-eight, I represent dedicated city employees in the Street Department, Transit, Engineering, Sanitation, Parks, Property Maintenance, Vehicle Maintenance, Wastewater Treatment Plant, City Hall, and the Library. These employees are loyal to their jobs and to the community that we live in. We were not asked or forced by anyone to present this offer to the city. We were only asked by the City Manager to come up with ways to save money. When the 4% increase for the fiscal year 2013 was negotiated four years ago, the economic climate was much better. While discussing ways to save money, we agreed that a 2% increase was more realistic in today's market and allows the city to save money. Adding the additional two years onto the contract will guarantee modest increases, limit the city's liability to a 5% on insurance, and provide some security for our membership. We're pleased that all the city unions will be participating in this concession, and we feel this is a win-win situation for all, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please convey to your members our great appreciation. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Twenty-eight, I represent dedicated city employees in the Street Department, Transit, Engineering, Sanitation, Parks, Property Maintenance, Vehicle Maintenance, Wastewater Treatment Plant, City Hall, and the Library. These employees are loyal to their jobs and to the community that we live in. We were not asked or forced by anyone to present this offer to the city. We were only asked by the City Manager to come up with ways to save money. When the 4% increase for the fiscal year 2013 was negotiated four years ago, the economic climate was much better. While discussing ways to save money, we agreed that a 2% increase was more realistic in today's market and allows the city to save money. Adding the additional two years onto the contract will guarantee modest increases, limit the city's liability to a 5% on insurance, and provide some security for our membership. We're pleased that all the city unions will be participating in this concession, and we feel this is a win-win situation for all, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Please convey to your members how appreciative we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Thank you. Council, anything else? All right, first, we need to vote on the Communication Workers of America, AFL-CIO, which we tabled from August 6th.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Then we have an agreement with ASME, which we tabled from August 6th, which we need to vote on also.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have a new motion.
Yeah, we have a resolution approving Amendment Number Two of Collecting Bargaining Agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and a Local Association 301 of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, July 1, 2009 to June 30, 2014.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Really no discussion? Okay.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Motion, all three carried. Thank you very much. And that's good news.
Yes. Very good news.
Okay, great. Now, we're moving on to our next resolution.
Resolution approving solid waste fee effective October 1, 2012.
Second.
I was waiting on until we got the logistics squared away.
My question has just been whether we brought the second one onto the table. You introduced the first resolution, but they're both, they were both tabled.
Right.
I did say that we were taking this one from the table. Would you talk about the solid waste fee?
Yeah. Solid waste, as we talked about last time, what we, what we had in your pocket was a pro forma for trying to get to a spot where instead of being $220,000 in the hole for the sanitation fund to $200,000 to the good, having a rate structure that would allow that, and also incorporate into it the purchase of replacement vehicles. And the last couple of replacement vehicles in the sanitation fund have been purchased as a GL bond issue. This would have them be covered within the rate structure. Depending on how this, you know, part of the discussion was, with this rate increase, we'd also be looking at a fairly significant rate increase next year, and then modest ones after that. Part of the discussion especially stemmed from Councilmember Reed, looking at it, and I think all of you were kind of in favor of it too, was we need to have some evaluation go on over time as to how cost competitive is our service? And that's something that we've talked about. I've wanted to have pushed off until we deal at least with the general fund issues and make sure that we work through that. This resolution will at least put us on the path to get into where we're alleviating that deficit balance that we have there, but it doesn't do away with the thought process of needing to make sure that we have our service provided in the best way possible. Not just, I know one of the things that comes up with that is taking a look at, can a private sector company provide a service at a cheaper cost? But part of it's also, can we structure our routes differently? Can we use different equipment that we can reduce some of our costs to? Other communities have been able to, are able to provide a comparable service with fewer personnel. Is it possible that we can transition over time through retirements to be able to do the same service more competitively? And those are all things that we need to take a look at moving forward.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Council, any questions or comments?
I guess I have a comment, you know, no, looking at it's a 90-cent increase and that would move forward October 1, and we just had an increase to July 1. Where I'm having difficulties with is, and I've spoke about this before, is, you know, looking at whatever, all, whatever total options out there. One may be privatizing it and looking at the potentially any money-saving options there, but when you increase 90 cents here and then 45 cents in July 1, you know, it's $1.35 within less than a year's time. Last year, we took away fall cleanup and fall pickup, and I think if we're looking to increase it at such a big rate, even though I understand what we're trying to do is get it books square, but we also need to bring back some services. You know, fall cleanup is one thing that I brought to the council about a month ago is some of the problem areas within Burlington are just trash, and I think that could potentially be eliminated with fall cleanup, as well as do we need to look at their tag system? When you can only put one trash can out on the curb, and then it costs you $1.50 for each and every trash can or bag that you put out there, you know, do we need to look at that? Because there's other municipalities in the area that have a lesser rate that you could put whatever you want at curbside. And that's, that's where I'm having problems with. So, even though I agree that we need to get the numbers where they need to be, right now, we're, you know, 220,000 in debt within this department, I just can't push for a 90-cent rate increase right after we did 45% increase.
I think because of our financial position overall, I think we're going to have to make a number of decisions that none of us are going to be enthused about. I mean, I don't want to see any rate increases. I don't want to see any tax increases. I mean, you know, it's like Christmas in Iowa. But we, I think we have to have the discipline to realize we've got some problems in this community, and we better address them, and that means making some decisions that will not be popular with a lot of people. But you make the decisions, you move along, and you bring this community back to a healthy position financially, and I think in the long run, that will serve this community well.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, Bob.
Yes, you are.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that, because we have to get the numbers where they need to be. But then, you know, we're trying to do that in a really short amount of time. Can we? It took us 20 years to get here, but we're trying to decrease it within two to three.
But, and I agree with what you're both saying, really, but what, and I know what you're saying, Chris, but we don't have a long time. You know, it's kind of like a compounding effect even there. If we don't handle some of these things immediately, then I think they compound over time. And, but what I do like what you said, and I guess I would question, because I wonder if some families with lower income, they don't go out and buy those extra tags?
Right.
And that, if there was a way that we can lower the price of the tags, or let people have more trash out there, because we do have a problem with people not putting it all out there, because they probably don't have a lot of money. I mean, they go ahead and they pay their water and sewer bill, but that extra, you know, $3 or something, they, they just, you know, that, it's, I don't know if there's any way we can do anything there to lower the tag?
Well, I mean, that's part of, I think, not right away, but I think that is part of an evaluation. If you look at a, do you look at a 90-gallon container instead? Well, you're going to get, you'd have two things that get lost in that. One is waste reduction. I mean, part of why you go to a smaller container is to try to get people to want to recycle more. And the other is a difficulty in, for some people to move a 90-gallon container. I personally prefer a 90-gallon container. We can use it each and every...
I could use it too.
And some of the, some of the pieces of equipment that you can look at for garbage trucks work more efficiently if you have a larger...
Because they have the arm, they just pick it up, and it's a one-man crew, it's every morning.
But that doesn't mean everybody would have 90-gallon containers, you know?
That's part of the evaluation, I think, you go to, is what, what do you do? And some of it has to do with what equipment are you looking at? Some of the equipment you are going to mandate that they go to a certain container, and you probably are, if you're doing that, saying it's the city-provided one.
Well, and I think we need to raise it to help straighten things out, but yet I think we do need to increase our services, and I don't like it that we don't have fall cleanup anymore. I think that you would see a lot of that.
It's, you know, I think it was like an $18,000, you know, light item that we took off two years ago to save money for solid waste. And, you know, it seems like we're raising fees but decreasing the service. I love that. And so, that's where I'm torn.
Yes, Associate Manager.
I think that can be part of what we look at. I don't think you're going to see it for this fall, but I think that is part of, as we go through the evaluation process, you have to decide what are your priorities.
Well, I think our priorities should be to have good service. If we're increasing prices, we can have good service, and that would be fall cleanup and a reduction in either the tags or a larger container, I think.
Okay, anything else, folks? Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
No.
Anderson? Aye.
Motion's carried. Now we move on to, we have two ordinances, well, three, actually.
Three.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance rezoning properly locally known as 2814 Mount Pleasant Street from M2 Heavy Industrial to C2 General Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Eric, is this any different from last week? No, two weeks ago?
No changes.
No change. This is the former oil change place that now wants to be a car dealership.
Mount Pleasant Street, just west of those, outside a couple properties.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Council, do you have anything that you'd like to ask or say or do? Would be, would be we willing to entertain a motion to amend?
Yes, I have a motion to amend, then, Your Honor, to amend the preliminary, motion for preliminary adoption, second reading of an ordinance rezoning properly locally known as 2814 Mount Pleasant Street from M22 Heavy Industrial to C2 General Commercial Zoning District to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance rezoning, the property locally known is 2814 Mount Pleasant Street from M2 Heavy Industrial to C2 General Commercial Zoning District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, we move, we have a motion and a second to amend, which in effect eliminates the second reading and moves us to the third reading. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
The amendment is carried, and the motion is amended. Now, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
The motion's carried. Mr. Reed?
Another ordinance for you, a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending Section 160.04, unsafe buildings of the Chapter 160, abandoned and unsafe buildings of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This was carried to the third reading because of a question by Mr. Brosine, and I assume you've had your discussions.
Yeah, we came back with Mr. Brosine and David's here, but seemed to have agreed on making this change at this time and continue to evaluate it over time.
Okay, good. Any comments from the audience?
I'm Ron Brosine. I'm here as a representative for the Southeast Iowa Property Owners. It's a newer association, and it's my understanding there's about 4,000 rental units in the City of Burlington, and presently, we represent almost a third of the... And presently, we represent almost a third of those. For an association that's less than a year old, I think that's doing pretty good. I want to tell you that our association is behind this ordinance. We support it as written. The, I think Larry Caston, as I understand it, picked up the ball on the old ordinance when my particular place came in having a meth bust. And when I came in and asked the city, what do we do? Really, nobody much knew, which is good. I've always told people it's a good thing. If, if everybody knew exactly what to do for a meth bust, that means you're having too many of them. The fact is that none of our three new members, or none of our three new inspectors really had much experience with it indicates it's, it's not as big a problem as the media would have us believe. That being said, it needed to be addressed. Larry did a good job, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Larry did do that ordinance, did he not?
He recommended a change.
Right. He did good research. It's a good conservative ordinance. We would like to have seen a little bit looser standard, obviously. The standard originally that was, that came out had a .5 micrograms per 100 square centimeters. Our ordinance has a .1. And this is according to Bill Terrell from Triage BioClean. He's certified to do the testing. He did our testing. He does the testing and then it gets sent to a lab. To put that in perspective, we're talking about very minute amounts. The .1 microgram per square centi, or per 100 square centimeters is roughly equivalent to taking something the size of a little sugar packet and spreading it over 10 football fields. The .5 is roughly two football fields. To get a reading on, at that level, on 100 square centimeters, you'd almost have to crush a grain and throw it in the wind. And I mean, we're talking about very minute quantities. The fact that the city addressed this at all made the Channel 6 news. They called me because they couldn't get a hold of the city. Eric was tied up that day, so I got a call from Channel 6 News. And I know that if you say no comment, it's roughly equivalent to saying I'm guilty. So I thought in the interest of transparency, we'd go ahead and talk to them. They did want to talk to the city, but as I said, Eric was tied up that day, so they came and they interviewed me at our location. And I wasn't the main thrust. They came here because the fact that Burlington is tackling this code was newsworthy. My particular house is nothing. Iowa does not have a meth ordinance. By coincidence, we had an inspection in Iowa City in one of our rental units that same week. Stan, Stan Laverman is the head inspector for Iowa City, and by coincidence, we got him as an inspector. And I asked him about a meth ordinance. Iowa City does not have one. His reasoning is the state doesn't give them any guidelines. So if we had the same thing in Iowa City, we could simply turn around and re-rent it. Think about that one. So Burlington, I think, has a lot to be proud of in that they are proactive. We did not really have a debate on this last time. I, I kind of got a kick out of the headline, "Code Change Sparks Debate." So, do you guys write your own headlines or do you have? Anyway, I think that that headline probably is what prompted TV 6 News to give us a call. So I think they gave us a fair reading, that the, the news thing was very fair and even-handed. And I think that the fact, again, the fact that Burlington has a meth ordinance at all is to be commended. On a sideline to that, I'm happy to say that Burlington Police Department, it's my understanding, is going to send a couple of people up to the LEAP program in Davenport, which can help prevent these kinds of things. The idea is prevention. You know, it's costing me a lot of money to straighten this house out, and it would be nice if we'd had a way to prevent it in the first place.
Exactly.
Oh, one other thing. When you have somebody move out of a house, you really don't know what's happened. So my positive spin in this is that when we're done, we're going to have to have it certified, clean, right? We're going to have probably the only house in the city that's going to be certified clean for meth, because you don't know if the person who moved out last time was using it. So without testing every unit every time there's a change in tenants, you really don't know. So, and I don't know how you'd address that, but that's pretty much what I've got on it. So I think it's a good ordinance. I appreciate it, and it gives us some guidelines. Now we need to work on protection, or prevention with the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counsel, are we okay with this now?
That was very good.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Would you like to introduce this resolution?
Yeah, we have a resolution establishing a school zone and a reduced school speed limit around Edward Stone Middle School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Frenault or Chief Beard, would you like to comment on this?
I asked for you to pull this off just so we could have Chief Beard and then actually Steve Hartman as well, address how this has gone, how the traffic went this morning and some of their thoughts as we proceed with evaluating over the next couple of weeks.
Well, I can start by saying the traffic thing didn't go so well today, you can say the least. I mean, we had three officers plus two shift commanders assigned. I was personally out there in the afternoon. The afternoon went far better, but it was because there was far less traffic on Mason Road. I mean, some of the things that, problems that we had, first and foremost, was the left turn into the school from Mason Road, eastbound traffic trying to turn left. Well, that turn lane shortened up, seven cars, I believe, if I counted them right, and then car eight, car nine kind of sits at an angle which stops the eastbound traffic period. And that traffic backed up past Lawrence. And that was with us guiding traffic, trying to hold traffic to get that traffic moving. The east, or the westbound traffic turning right into the school, well, that traffic backed up at the school, started down the lane, then to Mason Road, and backed up clear to Hegelmann Street. And that's unacceptable.
Wow.
Unacceptable. And so, I think it's going to require some, you know, Steve and I talked about this, some signaling at the intersection or eventually some infrastructure changes. Another real serious problem we have were school buses trying to leave the school and turn right. That turning radius right there is so short that the people in the left-hand turn lane to turn into the school exactly, Councilman Reed, that bus could not get through there without running up over the curb and up over the sidewalk. So in the afternoon, we blocked the right turn lane, moved them to the left turn lane to force them to turn right. At least then the bus had that length of that inside lane to make a swing and still was up on the curb to get onto Mason Road. And so there's some infrastructure problems there with the radius of the entrance and exit. And the only way I can see solving the Mason Road, at least eastbound, problem would be to create another lane, move a lane, and I'm not a traffic engineer, and Steve's going to have to speak to this, but create another lane that, that left-hand traffic then is not going to back up eastbound traffic. The afternoon let out at 1:00, so we just don't have this traffic on Mason Road. And it, we had them in and out of there in seven or eight minutes. The afternoon flowed really nice. We forced them to turn right. There was no left turns allowed. Then, like I said, closing off that right turn lane and forcing those buses over gave them enough room to make the corner, and everything just seemed to kind of work. My concern in the near future now is going to be the people that were trying to come westbound on Mason that couldn't are going to start cutting across on Hegelmann, on Star, and just multiply the problem on West Avenue. I mean, Mason Road was designed as an archery bar for those people living on that side of town because West Avenue was too busy. You know, so that's going to be our concern now. And the city manager asked, well, what was happening on Willow going to West Avenue? And I had to answer a perfect honest answer, we didn't have enough personnel to even look on that side of the school. But I do know that between the buses trying to leave going north and the traffic trying to go north, that Willow backed up from the school to West Avenue. So now you have Dill Street, Carlong Street, Garden Street that can't get to Willow to get out. So, I mean, there's, there's a whole host of different things going on here. And some of these problems, I'm confident, will resolve themselves over time. But the buses leaving that school is not going to resolve itself. There is no way enough room to get that bus out. And then we got buses that we could maybe solve this through transportation that want to turn left. Well, you have to stop all traffic in all directions and create a big enough intersection now for that bus to turn left to go back east on Mason Road. So, I mean, I'll kind of turn it over to Steve. That's kind of what we were experiencing, and it's, it's mainly in large part due to the amount of morning traffic on Mason Road. Because afternoon traffic, that thing flowed pretty good. I mean, even with the left turns going on, we, we got them in and out of there, I thought, really efficiently. But that was with our assistance.
Wasn't the school district guaranteeing that there'd be no buses going north?
You know, I don't know that. I think the city manager asked me that same question, and I don't know. That would have to be some, we would have to talk to transportation. I mean, I talked to Byron this afternoon, and, and he didn't really have an answer to that, because this morning, two buses went north and two buses went south. Well, this afternoon, three buses came south and only one went north, so.
I'm pretty sure they, they told us that wouldn't be happening.
And we can, yeah, I mean, if that's the case, it'd be easy enough to contract transportation and not let those buses go north. But as they try to come south, if we're not there, they are not going to make that turn without going clear up over the sidewalk and the curb. It's not possible. There's just not enough room.
Yeah, okay.
I think some of these challenges are going to exist for a few days, maybe for the week. I think traffic may get a little bit more challenging when we leave at 3:30 instead of 1:30. I think the largest challenge here is we only have two main exits from the school zone. We either exit on Mason Road, which takes time to hit a, an empty spot on that road, or we exit to West Avenue. So we'll be looking at things like signing, like Doug said, potentially, future needs for wider turn lanes or more turn lanes. I'm a parent of a student at that school. It was challenging this morning. I spent some time on site as well as Doug did. So we'll keep looking at things. I, I think this resolution in front of you concerning the 20 mile an hour zone, there was interest from the, the school board and from a few of you from council here that were interested in this 20 mile an hour zone. I think this can stay in place, and we continue to look forward to other changes that we can make out there.
Yeah, really, that's the issue we're dealing with right now is whether we, we're going to approve a, a speed zone there for the school district. But you're saying that'd be okay?
I, I think you can do this and still make the other changes in the future. Again, I think from staff level, we, we feel that it's possibly excessive use of signage and of the 20 mile an hour zone, but it's not a problem to, to create it.
On the turn lane, you know, to make them wider, whose responsibility is that? Is it the city's or the school's? Leaving the school?
We could have discussions about that, but I, I would imagine the city, but the city could make inquiries to the school.
Well.
There's a city street.
Yeah, city street, forget.
How soon can the signs go up?
Uh, we should be putting those up Wednesday or Thursday. We called for locates today, so by midweek, we should have the signs on Mason Road. The, the 20 mile an hour is already set up on, on Willow and Dill.
I, I see that on Sequoia too, yeah. Okay.
And we're going to maintain our presence there until those signs go up and do the best we can. I mean, you know, my fear would be we're going to get called away from there, at least in these first few days, and it's going to be a congestion, but we'll be there until the signs are in place and do our best to help resolve that.
I just ask that the parents and drivers in that area, they need to, you know, use a slow speed. It doesn't matter what's posted, it's going to require you to drive slowly and, you know, kind of experiment with what routes work to get your child in and out of the school area, so you can do it in an efficient manner.
And I did drive by there just as school was letting out, just shortly after the, most of the traffic had gone, and there were a number of, of students walking in the grass east on Mason Road, so I want to be heads up for that too, until they get a sidewalk put in there. Okay. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Counsel, do you have any other comments, questions?
I was just going to make, make one comment in regards to what you just said about sidewalks. The Safe Routes to School program is how this has been done typically, and they don't allow you to do that application until after school gets started, is open. We've had some discussions. But there would be a plan that we would, that there would be a Safe Routes to School application go in. And one of the concerns is whether there's going to be funding there and the timing of that. Typically, those applications have been due, Steve, is it October 1?
Not positive. You guys are doing some of those.
I think they've been October 1 with the federal calendar in the past.
Usually at this time of year, you wouldn't get one built, you know, before, during the semester, right?
Until next year. Yeah. But the, it sounds like the deadline's going to be pushed back, and even with that, the funding may not actually be allocated towards safe routes. It might be reallocated to a different use, or just more competitive and harder to get.
Well, we certainly want to encourage you to continue to talk to the school district and see what kind of changes and solutions they can come up with too. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion's carried. Now's the time set aside for comments from the audience. Is there anyone from the audience who has a comment on an issue we've not already discussed? I think we, I see we have a contingent of Boy Scouts here. Hope you found it exciting and entertaining. Oh, I see you're taking notes. Well, good. Ready to go. Counsel, do you have any comments? Mr. City Manager, anything?
Not really. Couple of us, Eric and I will be going down to the, what is that now, Keokah? Downtown Summit. It's pretty much the same thing that we just put in application to host for next year. And it'll be quite a contingent, I think, downtown partners will be down at that. So looking forward to that over the next couple of days.
Okay. Thank you.